Meeting will come to order. It's six eleven. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded in the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first order of business is the approval of minutes, open session, regular meeting on February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Marciano, seconded by Mr. Andriozzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Executive session minutes, February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty.
So move the executive session minutes with the appropriate.
Keep them closed. Mr. Marciano, there was a second by.
Second.
Mr. Pollak?
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no correspondence. Do we have any public comment?
Not that I know of.
We have no public comment. Next item on the agenda, item number six, is the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda, with the exception of the personnel matter.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Marciano to approve item A, leave of absence, and C, layoff. Is that correct? Mr. Marciano?
Yeah, with the.
Item A and item C, leave of absence and layoff. Is there a second to that?
Personnel matter.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have remaining in the consent agenda resignation.
I'll make a motion to remove, pull the item for the personnel matter and then approve it based on the terms discussed.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Picard, and that was seconded by. Just say your name, please.
Anthony.
Marciano. Mr. Marciano. Any questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is another.
There's another item on that of resignations they have to vote.
There is another resignation in the consent agenda.
That's correct.
All right, we'll take the second one. The first, the first one, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Okay, the second resignation.
Second resignation is part of consent agenda and I make a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. De Silva and seconded by Ms. Andriozzi. Any questions on that motion?
Correct.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent's report, Mr. Gojo.
Thank you, Dr. Pallada, members of the school committee. It is good to see you guys this evening. Before I begin with my items, I'd just like to make a brief statement thanking the central office team, our building principals and assistant principals, certainly our teachers and support staff members, and without question, our students and our parents for the successful implementation of our distance learning plan and attention to the social emotional needs of our students. This is a very difficult time for everyone, but with the support of the people that I just mentioned, in addition to the support of the town, North Province Police Department and Fire, when we distributed Chromebooks, support of the tech department. We accomplished a great deal under a great deal of challenging circumstances in a short period of time. I'm very proud of the school system and the way we have handled this, and I just wanted to thank everybody involved for the place that we are at right now and believe that we will get through this successfully together and stronger as a community because of it. First item on the agenda is the consideration and vote. I would request a motion by the school committee to vote to recommend, to support my recommendation that we award a new contract, a new transportation bid to Durham Student Services.
So move.
So motion by Mr. Marciano.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second by Mr. De Silva.
Seconded by Mr. De Silva. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
If I would just add, I'm sorry, Dr. Pallada, if I would just add that the contract that we've, the bid that you guys have just approved for Durham to continue to be our transportation partner in the district is a very fiscally, fiscally responsible decision on the part of the school committee. You heard the information regarding the bid and the bids that were submitted in executive session and the legal team, the central office team, we were able to, to develop a transportation bid and agreement, subsequent agreement with Durham that is very fiscally responsible and a good deal for the town and the taxpayers and the students of North Province. So I'm very pleased that we're going to continue our partnership with Durham. The next item on the agenda is item B, and we would like to table that item pending further information that our legal team will work on and present to the school committee in writing and with the possibility of a special meeting or a decision at our regular May meeting pending the requested information. So item B would be tabled.
Move the table.
Motion by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
Seconded by Mr.
Andriozzi.
Andriozzi. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, I placed on the agenda the issue of layoffs of crossing guards. As you are aware, I received a correspondence from the mayor on Friday. Also, I had been forwarded a message that was called into the mayor's office a couple of weeks earlier. We've received some inquiries. I know you guys have received some inquiries as well. The question is, why are we continuing to pay the crossing guards? And so I thought that that item should be placed on the agenda for public discussion so that all of the facts involved in this decision can be made public. And then if the school committee decides it's in the best interest of the district and our students to go in a different direction from what we are currently doing, then you have the ability to make that motion and to vote to lay off the crossing guards. So just as a way of background, we currently have twelve to fourteen crossing guards working one hour per day from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, Monday through Friday, for a total of five hours total per week with no benefits. Currently, their job is they've been assigned to the lunch distribution sites, of which there are five currently in the town, Maryville, Wayland, Centredale, Ritchie, and North Providence High School. So the crossing guards have been redeployed to ensure safe passage of students and families traveling to receive lunch distribution, Monday through Friday, from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. So part of the reason why all of our employees are continued, continuing to work during school closure is because the Federal Stimulus Act, the CARES Act, and I'll let Attorney Scangio speak more specifically to this. The Federal Stimulus Act has very specific language with school systems regarding maintaining the employment of all personnel. And then subsequent to that, we received written guidance from the governor informing us of the stipulations and the language in the, in the Federal Stimulus Act. So potentially, by not employing various categories of employees, we would jeopardize stimulus reimbursement, which could be up to seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the district, eighty-three percent of our Title I money. The other issue for your consideration is that if we were to lay off the crossing guards, we would be responsible for the unemployment cost, which would range anywhere from fifty percent to eighty percent. In addition, our crossing guards are ten-month employees. And so if we were to lay them off prior to the end of the school year, we would be, they would, they would be able to collect during the, currently, they are not able to do. But they would be able to collect during the summer if we lay them off prior to their ten-month school assignment. And we would then obviously be responsible for those same unemployment costs, which are not budgeted. So those are the facts of the matter. As I know it, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Scangio to add some legal clarification regarding the Federal Stimulus Act and the governor's guidance.
May I speak? Okay. I think one of the things that's confusing about the stimulus act is a lot of people believe that the federal government is just going to give money to the LEAs, the school districts, to basically fund them for whatever they think is going to be, and they may have as an expense. But as Superintendent Gojo mentioned in executive session, it's, first of all, it's going to be geared towards certain student populations that you have. Second of all, it's going to have strings attached to it. One of the strings in the CARES Act, which was the third stimulus bill, indicates that, to the extent practicable, the district is required to continue paying its employees. The intent under that stimulus bill specifically is that school districts don't dump employees onto the unemployment rolls because then DLT would have to pick up the cost of that. The, if we do that and we do that inappropriately, the punishment is, we could lose some or all the stimulus money that may flow to us. So that's the first issue that we have to be concerned about. The second, and it's kind of nuanced, is what happens when you lay someone off? So our district is a claims-made district, which means that when we lay someone off, we actually pay the unemployment claim as opposed to paying premiums. Now, over time, that's worthwhile doing, but in the short run, when somebody files for unemployment, that means we then play the, pay the entire amount of the claim. Those claims now have an additional six hundred dollars connected to them on a weekly basis from the federal government. I would assume that those would be prorated in this case because these are part-time employees, but they may not be. It's up to the state. And that's another way that the state and the federal government has decided to inject stimulus money into the economy. So by laying these crossing guards off, we may be responsible still for all or a good portion of what we're paying them, and we then would be paying them to stay home. So from a business point of view, it doesn't make any different sense to do that. And I know that there are some safety factors that perhaps the superintendent or someone else would like to discuss as well in terms of the job that these people do do. They're not just standing up against trees all day long for the district either. So from a business point of view, as I said, it makes sense for us to keep them employed now and to, to avoid the unemployment claim and actually get services for the money that's being paid for the taxpayers.
I agree.
If I can, if I can just add to Attorney Scangio's point, I've gotten feedback from the crossing guards themselves, and the majority of them are very happy that they are working and contributing and aiding our families and our students and playing a meaningful role during this very difficult time. Unfortunately, I will also say, a couple of crossing guards did say to me point blank that they would prefer to be laid off because they would, they would make more money staying home. So that's obviously a concern as well to Attorney Scangio's point. They are providing an important service at this point.
So based on the information that you have provided to us, it would seem to make sense that as far as the crossing guards are concerned, is to remain status quo and keep them as employees at this point in time. Does anyone have any comments relative to that?
I, I do, Dr. Pallada.
Marciano?
Yeah, I agree with that. It makes no sense to lay them off at this point anyway. I mean, they're providing an important service to us. It's a safety issue there, and I think it's, from a cost standpoint, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. And I think we should keep it status quo. I do.
Thank you.
Put that in a form of motion if you want.
Well, I, Dr. Pallada.
Yes, Mr. Pollak.
Well, when they first started giving out the meals, I actually went to a couple of locations, you know, a couple of times, and the weather was bad. Now that the weather's increasing, let me back up. So there was a majority of people pulling up in the vehicles to get the meals. But we all know the weather has not been very nice to us the last month or two. Now, I know the numbers of the news, uh, distribution have gone up considerably. Now with the weather, the weather's starting to turn, hopefully for the better. I just foresee more people actually walking, and there have been people walking up to get the meals. Some people don't have the transportation that they actually have to walk up. So from a safety standpoint, I think absolutely in my mind, there's no doubt that they should be out there for that one hour.
I agree with Mr. Pollak.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. I'm just checking.
You agree? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Marciano. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Pollak. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
At this point, I would like to turn the superintendent's report to our assistant superintendent, Louise Seisinger. Let me just add, Assistant Superintendent Seisinger has played a large role in the implementation of the distance learning plan. She, Cindy Van Avery, our special ed director, Lisa Cassinelli, finance director, Kathy Goet. The amount of hours that they have put in day and night and the, the meetings that we've had to have in the early evening during the school day to monitor the various aspects of this very, very complex distance learning plan, they are putting in a tremendous amount of time and hours on this. And it's because of their work that it's going very successfully. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our assistant superintendent for an important update on some things that the community needs to be aware of.
Thank you.
She's muted.
I have a hand raised from a.
Sorry, sorry.
There we go.
Sorry.
Hi, Louise.
Hi, Louise.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Gojo and members of the school committee. I appreciate that. It's nice to see everybody. You have my update. I just wanted to review a few things. Primarily, as Superintendent Gojo said, we've been obviously working a lot on our virtual learning and distance learning from the plan on up and all the resources. We're really, really proud of how it's been going. That's thanks to the principals and the teachers and everyone working collaboratively. I'm really grateful for our team. So just to share some information about that, we're in our sixth week of virtual and distance learning. We've conducted two professional learning days with all the schools, and they mainly collaborated on their teams in terms of planning, learning new technology platforms and activities for lessons and student engagement, and continuing to learn best practices from each other, which has been outstanding. We will have three more professional development days, as you know, through the new calendar, from May and June, so sixth, twentieth, and then June first. And we're probably going to pull the same type of PLC model where we're working together and collaboratively as teachers and staff, and that's going very well. We've also had, and Ms. Van Avery can speak to this, there's been professional learning that's happened with the staff, and I want to thank Lynn Fontaine who's helped coordinate teacher assistant training. That's going really, really well, so thank you for that, Lynn, and to Cindy. Some other things, I just summarized here for your information, was a survey that we did. I did it towards the beginning of our virtual learning experience with student, well, not students, but parents and teachers. And really, some outstanding feedback. We had four hundred and ninety parents respond overall K to twelve, and we had two hundred and eighty-three teachers respond. So that's really a good feedback from everyone. So you can see some of the, the percentages there in terms of their response, which are extremely high. And what we did was looked at that as a team and were able to respond to what we needed to do as far as technology and just really pumping up that communication between our teachers and our families and also our students. And we've really worked hard on that. So we've met consistently with our administration leadership team and responded to these, these concerns. There are just some positive comments there that I highlighted too. My next plan is to do a student survey, probably K to five and then six through twelve. Actually, working with Highland around some ideas regarding that, so I look forward to that. And then we'll follow up with another survey for teachers and for parents in May so that we can continue to respond to people's needs at that time. So that summarizes that. You can see some of those comments and the basic summary. So the next, like I said, are to have the student surveys, continue the communication and support, continue professional learning at school and district level, and continue to update our virtual learning, distance learning website and resources, which we've been doing. And then other, the next big news is that we received that comprehensive literacy grant for grades K to five that was done in February, and myself, Donna Stone, and Steph Gannon was our Title I coordinator. We really wrote the grant together, so I want to thank them. So approximately, we met with Ride last week. We wrote it for over nine hundred thousand, and we are receiving close to eight hundred thousand. They only cut a small portion of it, so we're really grateful for that. But as you can see, it's mainly focusing on our ELA curriculum. We'll be piloting two resources next year. ARC, which is the American Reading Company, and one's two thousand twenty version, which are both green on Ed Reports. So we're really excited about that, but mainly, we're looking to incorporate and make sure we're including culturally, culturally responsive components to that, supporting our multilingual learners and supporting our differently abled learners throughout that process. So we'll be working with our ELA District Committee, we'll be working with Special Education, we'll be working with our EL team, and we'll really, we're really, really excited about that. So there's lots to do with that, and we have to respond to a few questions that have come through. But with that, we've included coaching, we've included professional development, and that will be over the next several years, four years. The next one I want to talk about is the Diversity Talks Grant that we've received at the high school. And again, that's thirty thousand dollars that, you know, that grant is worth, and I'm working with Kathy Lisi and Kristin McGill at the high school. This will be, this is still happening virtually, where we are going to be training, recruiting, and then training high school students, grades nine through twelve. And they'll be trained in the summer at, through Rhode Island College with Diversity Talks about cultural responsiveness and equity and all the things that we've been talking about. And then they'll come back in the fall, and then they'll actually train staff at the high school. So that's really exciting opportunities. We have about twelve students right now who are interested in that at the high school, and we're really, really excited about that. And then we also received, thanks to Melissa Cafrey and the team there, and Melissa submitted this to us, so thanks, Melissa. Melissa Cafrey, Maria Bronco, and Julie Sinia. The high school received a grant for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the US Department of Ed, and it's to help establish computer science pathways in the high school. So we're, again, excited about introducing this coursework and this pathway to the high school. So there's some more details there, which you can read about, and that was, that will be formally awarded in May. We're continuing to pilot science resources, even though we've gone virtual, which is excellent. I'm with the Science Committee. We're meeting again tomorrow. Amplify and STEM Scopes are the two resources we've been piloting in grades four and seven. And got some great conversations around that, and STEM Scopes will actually be presenting tomorrow. Amplify presented to the team a couple of weeks ago. So our goal is, you know, depending on our budget, is to continue this work and, and vote on a curriculum resource for science. So, and that, that occurred because our contract currently with Foskett's is expiring, as, as I've said in the past. The Equity Institute work that you met Carla Vigil a couple of months ago, did a wonderful presentation for the school committee. We're kind of holding on that right now because of being in this, in this virtual situation, because that was for K to five, if you recall. So we will continue that work in the fall with our K to five and do the equity audit that, you know, they were going to do with our district, but we will be continuing that work. And Melissa Cafrey, who's the Director of Multiple Pathways, also submitted this. I wanted her just to explain to you what's happening with the pathways at Birchwood and Ritchie Middle School. We met last week. Actually, they're going to be partnering with Project Lead the Way, and we are going to be adding to our curriculum at the both middle schools in an effort to continue the ways from the middle schools to the high school. So we are working on that as well, and the, you can see there, it's in computer science. There's also some other pathways in design and modeling, medical detectives. And at Ritchie, it'll be automation and robotics, computer science, design and modeling, energy and the environment, and medical detectives. So all of that, well, those courses will align directly to the courses at the high school and the pathways. So I want to thank Melissa and Brian and TJ of schools, middle schools, and all of their teams there for all their support. And then finally, just positive note about distribution of book bags that we did last week at Centredale and at Wayland, and we tried to target the schools that have the most people visiting for lunches and for breakfast. We distributed over three hundred and thirty-five book bags to families, and that was very successful. And it also happened again on, that was Monday on Tuesday. We had volunteers. I want to thank Charlene Smith and Amy Carroll, who helped coordinate that with me. And it was just really great to see our students and to see families and talk to them and see how they were doing and just to show our support, you know, person to person, with masks, of course. But it was a great experience, so I just wanted to share that as well. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any committee members have any comments? Well, I, I just have a few comments. First of all, congratulations on all, on all the grants that you have received. Job well done. I think this is the first time that we met since we went to virtual learning as a group with the school committee. We haven't had an opportunity to express our thanks. I want to thank all the people involved. A lot of people had to come together in a very short period of time to make virtual learning work for families, not only just students, but for families. It was a daunting task, and so congratulations on pulling that all together. Everybody in the educational community has done an outstanding job with that. There's a lot of work involved. The other thing I would like to thank you for is all the weekly updates. And I, I go back to the very beginning when this whole process started to present itself. Superintendent Joe, you sent out a lot of information to the community, keeping them informed of the situation. That was a huge asset to the community, making sure that they were always well-informed because there was a lot of apprehension amongst the community when this disease broke. And congratulations to you and your staff for getting out all that information and really establishing a calming presence in the community. That was exceptionally valuable, so thank you for that. The feedback that I'm getting is that families are very happy in terms of the continuation of a quality education. No one expected that we would be doing this for a period of time, but you put together a program that is really working for families and kids. And I think the school committee certainly appreciates that, and I certainly know the community appreciates that. So kudos to all of you that have worked on this and put this program together. We know we're not going back to school this current school year. Hopefully, we'll get back in September, but that is still questionable at this point. But keep up the good work. Great job, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Dr. Pallada. If I could just add two items, we are in the process of finalizing some information for the community regarding how students will be graded during the virtual learning process for the fourth quarter and then for the year. We think we have it, a system in place, ready to go, following what many other districts across the state are doing, K to eight. It is much more complex at the high school level regarding numerical grades, pass/fail grades, satisfactory, unsatisfactory grades, all kinds of implications with that for transcripts and GPA and class rank. So we're working with the Principals Association and NEAS and the high school administrative team to finalize a system that we think will be fair and equitable to everybody involved during this, during this, during this, during this distance learning process. The other piece is I participated in a Zoom conference today with Principal McGill, Assistant Principal Kathy Lisi, and the teachers at the high school who are the class advisors, and the officers of the senior class. and the teachers at the high school who are the class advisors and the officers of the senior class. We are really, really close to coming up with a format for graduation, which is at the top of our priority list. They also, they also are planning virtual recognition of honors night in National Honor Society. So that information should be forthcoming from the high school. We've received a ton of suggestions from the community. We are really appreciative of that. People are very enthusiastic about things that they would like to see done for the class of 2020. And we certainly will remember the great sacrifice that they've had to endure in all of this, along with all of our students, but particularly the class of 2020. So we want to make it special and memorable for them. However, people have to understand that we are still going to have to abide by Department of Health and Governor guidelines regarding the number of gatherings. And although some of the suggestions are outstanding and great and creative and wonderful, not all of them meet the guidelines and would be approved by the governor. So I just need to make sure that the public knows that, but it's our top priority. We are very close to finalizing that format.
Dr. Plata?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Picard.
So thank you, Joe. Thank you, Dr. Plata. Just, you know, I'm not going to reiterate everything he said, but I agree. Our district central office, principals, assistant principals, teachers, everyone, awesome job. Really happy and appreciate the flexibility and the willingness to take feedback. I think that's the most important thing that I've seen, that we're all learning. And feedback is not bad. I think letting us hear that is important so we can get better. And like we tell our kids every day, you just keep doing it until you get and improve it. My concern on grading, and I know, I'm sure you've already discussed this, is keeping the lens on equity. I want to ensure that we're not grading privilege. I, I know that you all, Joe, I know you're core, you and I have similar belief systems around this, around this work. But I do know that I've seen, you know, the emails from Ms. McGill as a parent and the emails from Mr. Politano, and they're awesome. And it gives me great comfort seeing that our leaders are making sure that our students feel valued and that we're really, we remain human. And the fact that many of our families are dealing with COVID-19 across the board in very different ways. You know, we've, we've had some deaths. We've had some of our kids get sick and they're unable to do the work because of that. So just, I just implore everyone to continue that flexibility. But keep our expectations high, but know that everyone's situation is different. And often in a case like this, it's case by case. So I appreciate all the work you've all done and continue to do every day.
Gina, thank you for your perspective as a parent.
Thank you, Mrs. Picard. Are there any other comments? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item eight. Any school committee reports or requests? We have no old business. Moving on to new business. Mr. Gohoe, before I hand that over to you without objection, I'd like to take the, the third read and combine them to one, one motion, if there's no objection to that. So the first third read would be the approval of the classroom observation policy. The next third read would be the approval of the grading policy. And the third read would be on the temporary homebound policy.
Make a motion to approve all three third reads?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Picard and seconded by Mr. Maciano. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gohoe, I'll let you do the second reads.
Okay, Dr. Plata, these are the second reads of policies that were last seen on our February agenda. So we've moved them ahead to the second read. And you'll, that they have been reformatted along the lines of the discussion that we had at the February meeting so that we can distinguish between policies and procedures. So at this point, I will entertain a vote and a discussion on the fundraising policy, which is the second read.
Don't move.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't need to vote on these. Does anybody have any questions on any of the second reads?
I do. I do, Dr. Plata.
Mrs. Picard.
So thank you so much. Format is much easier. And I appreciated that everyone went through that. Just a couple of things. One, the crowdfunding, I noticed there is a spelling error in protocols. We just want to fix that in the header. And I also noticed that we embedded the protocols in, and it looks like a first, second read. So I'd be mindful, while it's important for us to take a look at stuff like that, we don't approve it. So you don't want to make it look like a policy. So my only recommendation would be for the crowdfunding is just fix the spelling. And the protocols make it clear that I wouldn't put first read and second read on the protocols because that's a management right for you all. So I would just take those more for information purposes. For us, maybe have a second item that says information on protocol. But we don't need to approve protocols. And the other one was the educator court, court of responsibility annually at the end, I believe is spelled incorrectly. And so just double check stuff like that overall. And then the only other thing, just on the best practice, the kindergarten early admission policy is a year. We haven't seen that in a year. So I have a real big problem saying that the first read was last year and the second read is this year. So I don't, I don't have any major issues with the kindergarten admission policy other than the fact that I think you want to be mindful and maybe you want to add something. So for example, it says without an increase of staffing, especially in the time that we're looking forward, we may be under enrolled at the beginning and then be over enrolled in November. So we don't want to put ourselves in a predicament where we're paying more because we did a September review and we didn't think about what that could look like. But like I said, in the future, I would prefer the first and second reads to be within months of each other. Obviously with now for things like this, but a year is a long time to have to see that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to item number 11, approval of bills.
Just a question, Dr. Plata.
Mr. Andriozzi.
Yes, number 33 and 34.
33 and 34.
Correct. I thought we have, don't we have a heating guy on staff? I don't understand why we continuously go out to pay someone else to do fireside boilers, $180. Fireside boilers, $180. It says for maintenance. I thought we had.
I don't have the bills with me tonight. Unfortunately, they're at Mary's house, but I can check with Jimmy. I know in the past when you had a question about that, it was something with the boilers, I believe, at the high school. We don't have access to get into something to repair, repair them. I think that was something, it was like too big of a job for the guy we have. But I can, I can check with him again.
So do we know if those were the high school or not? You don't even know that?
I don't. I don't have the actual bills with me tonight, but I can check. I'll see Mary. She'll be bringing them in so we can print.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, would you forward that, would you forward that to Mr. Andriozzi and the committee when you get that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
And one last question.
Yes.
You know, you don't have the bills with you as well, but electrical work. There was three, 725, 725, and 785. Their numbers, 118, 119, and 120.
Okay.
Is that part of the, last, the last time we met, we, we okayed a vendor? Is that the vendor?
Yes, that is the person that we, that we okayed the bid on, that we approved the bid on.
Okay, so his rate was, if I remember correct?
I believe it's 100 an hour.
100 an hour. So he did.
No, I'm not sure. Well, I'm not sure if this, how, when, what the dates of this work was. I'd have to check on the invoice. If it was prior to the bid or if it was after the bid. So I'll have to check on that too.
So it's $2,200. So that equals 22, 22 hours, correct?
Right. If it was, if it's 100 an hour, yep.
Could we find out what that was? It's an awful lot of hours.
I can find out.
It just sounds like a lot of hours. To see what he repaired. Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem. Not a problem.
Any other questions on the bills? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
By Mr. Maciano, seconded by Mrs. Picard. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Dr. Plata?
Yes.
I omitted under section 10, item J. So we need to go back. I need a motion to approve the removal of inventory from Ritchie, which are two desktop CPUs under section 10, item J.
Sure. So granted, we need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Mr. Andriozzi?
Yes.
Seconded by Mrs. Picard. Further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We approve the bills. Item 12, any requests to address the committee?
Excuse me, Dr. Plata? Yeah, I have a hand raised by Karini's iPhone from somebody from the public.
Yeah, that's me. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I just wanted to adjust on all of you, superintendent, the committee, for, as a crossing guard in the town, I, I want to thank you for the status quo. I'm at the Middle Spring Avenue and Terry Spot for where Whalen is. And I have noticed that with this warmer weather, we do have more kids. So when I saw in the paper today that you were having this meeting, I just wanted to, to see what, see what was going on and what was happening. And I appreciate the fact that you did that because there are, those kids are coming out. They are out there. So it's definitely wasn't the best interest to do that and I really appreciate that. I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments and we thank you for your hard work and keeping our kids safe.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night.
Any other requests to address the committee? Okay, hearing none. We have no pending business. Before we make a motion to adjourn, I just was remiss in mentioning that there were no votes taken in an executive session. So the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
Mr. Maciano, seconded by Mrs. Picard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. As a first time doing this, I hope it went very well, particularly for the public. Thank you and have a good night.
Stay safe, stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.